Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's right now 6:02 PM. Welcome to the January 10th, 2023 regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can please take your call.
Yes, Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Mo Baydoun.
Here.
Nancy Brier.
Here.
Robert Coniston is absent. Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winsell is absent. Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance, and that's going to be led by our new state representative, Anne Burn.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and congratulations again. Next up on our agenda is Agenda Approval, item number three.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting on January 10th, 2023, as submitted.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on our agenda is Approval of Minutes, item number four. Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of December 13th, 2022, as outlined in 4-8.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilman Baydoun. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun?
We are just asked the clerk to make, recognize that. Councilman Coniston is here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Any discussions on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on our agenda is Minutes from the Regular Meeting of December 13th, 2022.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 13th, 2022, as outlined in 4B.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on our agenda is Public Hearings and comment on Agenda Items only. You will have two minutes. Please come on up to the podium, state your name, street, and city, please.
Zuhair Abdallah, Rosemary.
Dearborn Heights.
Is that good enough for you?
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
I have two issues. I would like to know why Treasurer Lisa Exa Clayton is asking the Chair to read a letter she sent to the council. I would like to hear from her personally. What's the reason? This is something, you know, for the first time I see happening in the last 20-some years in the city. So if she can be kind enough to explain to the public why she wants you to read this letter. The second thing, from the audit report, I noticed the police salaries, they are down over $1 million. That means we lost so many police officers. If the Chief of Police would be kind to tell us how many police officers we are short in the city, and what is the effect on the safety of our residents, and why this huge amount of money is less than last year.
Okay.
Anybody would like to answer this? If not...
I do know the police chief, I don't know if he's on line.
Maybe the mayor can answer it, since he is the chief.
We have ten, we're ten down, we have seven in the beginning, before the new chief took over, so we have seven.
And I do know that, I've spoken with the police chief about it multiple times, they are definitely actively and aggressively looking to add additional hires. It's definitely on his radar, that, I can tell you myself.
Yeah, that is a big concern to lots of residents, because you have 10, according to the mayor, 10 people. That's almost 10% of the force is not working. So I appreciate it if we can really aggressively start looking to hire people, because, Ray, I saw that. You make me nervous every time you raise that. Thank you.
Just a little bit, sir, I just want to let you know that I do know that not only are they aggressively looking here locally, but I can tell you without getting into details, they're going into other states now. So it's definitely on the chief's and the mayor's radar to do more hiring. And as far as the treasurer, you asked a question for the treasurer. I don't believe I see her online here.
No, she has, she's in class.
But if she comes on, she said she might come on Zoom. If she does come on, I'll see if she can answer during that particular question, that particular item.
Thank you, Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Mohammed Jani, North Evangeline Street, Dearborn Heights. I have also two issues I'd like to bring up. My first issue I'd like to understand a little bit better. It's my understanding that when the Planning Commission is picked or assigned, it's the mayor's people that picks them, isn't that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The mayor appoints, and then the council approves it.
Okay. So is there criteria to picking these people? I mean, do you guys lay out a 1 through 5-point criteria that they have to meet before they get picked and approved?
No.
Wait. There's some for the mayor.
Okay, then, Mayor, is there, is there points that you go down the line, architect, builder, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, for people that are sitting on this commission? Can you elaborate on that for me for a little bit?
Well, some of the ones that were on the council, I mean, on the commission before, some of them remained, and...
I'm not talking about before, I'm talking about now. The people that are being approved tonight, let's say. The eight people that are on the agenda that are supposed to be approved. Do they all meet the criteria? Do they meet a criteria that the city has?
There's no criteria.
So it could be your first cousins.
There's no, I can assure you, I don't have any relatives on the commission.
I said, but it could be.
No, no, but I don't have, it's nepotism, and I don't have any cousins, any family member that work for the city or on the commission.
I didn't say you did. I'm asking.
No, I know, but I want to elaborate, since you mentioned it, I'm telling you, I don't have family members.
It could be your best friends.
I don't have...
Could be business associates.
Well...
You don't have a criteria. I'm trying to understand how you pick people to be on this commission if they don't meet a criteria. They should meet a criteria. I mean, common sense tells you when you're hired for a job, you have to meet certain criteria. You go in for an interview, whatever it is. My second thing I'd like to bring up, because I got less than 30 seconds, is the police, I want to piggyback what this gentleman, Mr. Zuhair, said earlier. It's my understanding that we're running on a skeleton crew with the police. It's really bad. I hear through the grapevine, there's only maybe two at night running the whole city. I mean, the people in the city need to know, and this is a very, very serious issue that needs to be addressed. I understand you're reaching out to other cities, as you explained, Chairman, Chair Council, but really, this shouldn't have gotten that far. Why is there an exodus of police? Something had to go wrong, and it really needs to be looked at deeply, because this city's not covered. And I'm very concerned, as a 16-year resident, that we're running on a skeleton crew, and the only answer is, we're searching outside now? I mean, these officers who have left us, didn't they leave with a two-week notice, one-month notice? Why wasn't it addressed then? I mean, we're all jeopardized.
The best I can tell you is there's things being worked on, on a weekly basis, okay? You got to just trust me on this one, on a weekly basis, in a department, if not daily basis, to make changes for the better.
God forbid, something happens, we're running on a skeleton crew, something happens in this city, this city's going to get nailed with a lawsuit because of the situation that we are in. For whatever reason it occurred, it's going to be exposed.
It's on our radar. Like I said, I can't get into the details, but it's on everybody's radar.
As for Chair, I'll just add on this, and thank you so much for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
I will tell you, this is not just happening in Dearborn Heights. Believe it or not, it's happening in our neighboring communities, and just hear me out for one minute. Dearborn Heights...
Okay, guys, guys, guys.
Just on TV, and Bluefield Township was just saying this about how bad it is in their cities, and they can't find police officers. It's on the news, Vince. Okay, look at the news.
Okay, Councilmen, guys.
Listening to the wrong people.
With all due respect, I appreciate that, and I hear you.
There's a national shortage right now.
And I hear you. But again, as my point is, this didn't just happen.
Correct.
These police officers who have left us gave at least two weeks or month notices. We should have been on top of it a long time ago.
But they have been.
Okay.
But what has been done, Ray?
But you know what? People need to know, Council Chair, people need to know.
Absolutely.
Okay, people need to know.
Absolutely.
They have been looking for police officers, not just this month, it was last year, and a year before that, and a year before that. You even heard Lee Gavin, when he was a police chief, saying, "They're having a hard time filling shoes in the police department. Nobody wants to be a cop anymore, anywhere." Go to any city you want, Mr. Dabrowski, and call him up and ask him how many police officers.
On that point, on that point, just one, let me make this one last.
But I apologize.
Because I'm sick and tired of all the bad crap.
One last, one last point. I hear you, I hear you, Ray.
Yeah.
I hear you, but they are going to other cities. They're not, they're not tiring, they're going to other cities. Correct. So what does that say? What are they leaving us?
Guys, okay, I don't want to get rude, but you passed your time, I'm sorry. Thank you.
For your information, Mr. Muscat, Schoolcraft College. No, I'm going to respond to his comment.
You will. Name, street, and city.
Vence Dabrowski, Columbia Street, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
It can't be personal, you got to respond to things that are on the agenda.
Well, I'm responding to a comment made by Mr. Muscat.
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
Okay.
Schoolcraft College is starting a new season on July 23rd of all their new cadets. There's approximately 30 of them. The problem is, Mr. Muscat, officers don't want to work in Dearborn Heights because there's an issue. There's an issue, obviously, here. They're being hired everywhere else but here.
And where are those police officers from other cities that have left other cities?
I'm going to take a recess. Everything's got to go through the chair, please.
Schoolcraft College has got 30 of them coming out.
You know what? You're getting your information from the wrong source.
Okay, Councilman, I'm going to take a recess, all right?
Yeah. One of them, I'm just going to talk to my ladies.
Bad, negative things that few people are saying about our police department.
Okay, next up.
Our police department used to be good.
Vince, that's...
Obviously, there's an issue with the administration.
Vince, okay, you guys are getting out of line. Now, next up, I'm going to have people removed. I'm trying to keep it calm, please, thank you. Next up.
I don't have anything to say about the police. Rachel Alplight, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Regarding 9E, the streetlights item in the South End, great, love it. I would love to see more analysis of those, that whole neighborhood. It's really dark at nighttime, it does not feel safe to walk on your own street, take out your trash in the winter. The whole area needs to be looked at. Last year, at the February 8th meeting, there was an approval for the new lights, the LED ones. Did those ever get installed?
Yes.
Because they don't look any different.
Yeah, well, mine needs to be yellow, another LED.
Mine or not, has the whole city been done?
So if you, yes, and if they sent us an email that if you haven't had your, I'm sorry, Council Chair, they sent us an email that if there is a neighborhood, or if there are one or two lights that have not been replaced, you can reach out to Ali Deeb. We all received the email. I can tell you, for most part, driving down Annapolis, I've noticed it, driving down John Daly, I've noticed it. But if your street hasn't been taken care of, reach out to Ali Deeb, share your address, and he'll get it taken care of.
Okay, so that's who we would need to reach out to.
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Regarding 8E, which is the Martin Luther King Day event, I'm really excited about that, but I will say, compared to last year, I am a little sad that we aren't crossing Telegraph. I understand the safety concerns, but to be completely honest, as a white woman, I think that the visibility of events like this is really important to create the environment where we can discuss these issues, so that we can say, like, we're going to make signs, right? Who's going to see the signs just on that little stretch of Annapolis? Only the neighbors that live there, probably, and the people that happen to drive by. When we crossed Telegraph, it inconvenienced people for five minutes, but they saw what was going on. They probably looked it up on the news afterwards, maybe that inspired them to learn more about Martin Luther King. That's the kind of thing that I think that we do need more of, and it feels a little bit like we're going backwards by restricting it to a smaller footprint. And then, in regards to 8A, the grant, what projects is that being utilized for? It said it was a COVID grant, but there wasn't details about what the specific projects were for that.
Mayor?
We can talk about that after.
Well, I have follow-up questions, depending on what the project is, before it's voted on.
About eight seconds after.
I'm ready.
Mayor, do I answer?
Just like a quick thing would be fine.
This is a grant from 2020. This is a public assistance grant for FEMA. It is a reimbursement for the expenses that we had in COVID during the pandemic for our employees, so over time that our police officers, fire department had. So this money has already been spent. This is just a reimbursement that the government is giving us back from the additional expenses we had in 2020. There's another one coming for 2021, but they're always about a year behind in the reimbursements.
Thank you, Maryana.
That's awesome. I'm really, really excited and glad that we are getting that, and that's what I was hoping it was for. So great, awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Public comments on Agenda Items. Come up, Doctor.
Good evening, everyone. Abraham DeBajah Kinmore, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Thank you, Council Chair, for giving me an extra two minutes. I appreciate you. So touch base on the...
One quick second. Okay, go ahead.
So I just want to touch base on some Agenda Items, particularly this Planning Commission. Have you guys been following anything to do with the residents for the last, like, two years? We've had major issues with this Planning Commission that's been appointed by the mayor. We'll get into some specifics about that, but again, to touch base on one of the residents, there is no criteria for a Planning Commission member. Again, there's no, like, engineers, there's no, you know, real estate agents, brokers, anyone there that would have any kind of insight on what should be and should not be done in the city of Dearborn Heights. Again, other cities have council, voted, elected officials that put the Planning Commission in check. We don't have that here in the city of Dearborn Heights. I'm not sure why that is. I knew me and Councilman Baydoun were supposed to talk about that about a month ago, I never heard back from you, hopefully I will this time. But we need our city council, our elected officials, to keep the Planning Commission in check. Again, this resident here, Mr. Mayor, nothing personal, you specifically appointed a commission member who was a sub-partner of a previous owner for the car wash. I specifically told you, hey, you're appointing so-and-so, who's basically with the car wash, he's a previous partner before he sold it. He said, no, technically, they sold that piece of property, they're business partners, but not for this specific car wash. Not only did he get appointed by this commission or this council, he was actually the one that co-chaired and voted yes on the car wash being built. There's other Planning Commission members who have very close ties with the mayor. So I need you guys to please vet who you guys appoint to the Planning Commission. This is one of the only commissions that you guys have no say in it. They can technically build strip club after strip club in the city, under special land use approval, without any of you guys having any say to it. You guys are elected officials, you guys are technically, can lose your seat if you guys upset the residents, but we're not allowed to speak in the commission members. There is technically even the criteria that they come up with, nine criteria, no problem. One criteria, I have you here, about the basis of need. City Attorney, Planning Commission Council, they've gone through, like, five of them in the last two years, because they keep getting fired or don't show up for some reason to back the residents up. Said, based on need, it's technically in a capitalistic society, it's a vague term, you can technically build any business you want, as long as it's capitalistic, correct? And we leave it up to the commission members. You're talking to a pharmacist, you're talking to people that own, you know, like, clubs, you guys own people that own, no one has a background in this. Oh, leave it up to you. Another thing he said, Wade Trim. Wade Trim came, they're being grilled by the residents, he says, "I'm not sure if I'm prepared to answer these questions tonight. I didn't bring my material." If Wade Trim is not answering our questions, but you guys still voted yes on it. Wade Trim, Chip, specifically stated, "I don't like the car wash idea. It's a horrible plan." Does it meet some of the criteria? That's up to you. Okay. Again, this does not happen in any city other than Dearborn Heights. We're still have, the residents, have about $40,000 in attorney fees, fighting the city of Dearborn Heights for the old Planning Commission's ruling. Now, the residents got ruled against, and we had to appeal it for another 20 grand. Why? Because you guys have people that sit on this planning, that are appointed by the mayor, who have connections with the mayor, correct? That you guys have no say or backing. So again, it's extremely frustrating. I was going to give you guys a whole lecture about it, there's no need to do that. Last thing is, the planning, exactly like the Starbucks with the car wash, the plans have been changed, I've emailed you, is this, yeah, attorney for, I've emailed you four times, you haven't responded to me. The planning...
This is ongoing litigation. I'm advising anyone not to respond.
You don't got to respond, I'm asking you to respond.
That's why, anyone hasn't responded, there's a separate, there's a separate legal counsel sign. I've reviewed all your emails.
No one's gotten back to me.
No one's being rude to you.
No one's gotten back to me.
But they respond to your attorney.
Respond to me, respond to me.
No, I'm not responding to you.
My time is valuable.
He will respond to your attorney.
Okay, you responded to my attorney. Question is, Starbucks, Mr. Councilman Muscat, the Starbucks, when it was built, you guys approved plans for it, but they were changed when it was built, correct? Okay, the car wash was approved with the plans that were given to them. Since then, there's been significant changes to the way it's being built. There's ordinance, which we've actually given to all the residents here, that cannot be approved by the Building Commission or the administration. That has to go back in front of special, to the Planning Commission to re-approve the changes. Are we going to reinvent the wheel? We're not going to go back and say the same thing. Same thing that's happened to Starbucks, happened with the car wash, we won't stand for it. Please make better decisions, or get your own Planning Commission members that you guys want, you guys get half, the mayor gets half, and then there's checks and balances if you guys don't want to go and follow the other city rules, where council has to approve special Planning Commission meetings. That's a good alternative, you keep the residents happy, you keep the checks and balances to the mayor, and it's a done deal.
Okay.
That's good?
Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on Agenda Items only? Maryana is our Chief of Staff, but if you don't mind announcing, if you're speaking as Chief of Staff or as a resident?
I'm speaking as Chief of Staff on behalf of the Treasurer, who is not here today. So I just wanted to announce that she is not here today, and that the backup for her agenda item, which is item number 9A, has been updated, so we are advising everybody to follow the backup that has been amended in the agenda, which does not include the communications that were previously mentioned in a public comment.
Okay.
We did update that on our website as well.
Yeah, we received the email from the clerk. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on Agenda Items only? Hearing none? Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak on Agenda Items only? Madam Chair, I don't see nobody. Do you see anybody?
Just get promoted, and, no, I don't see anybody on there.
Okay. Okay, well, that ends our public comment section. Next up is item number six, fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims 6-1 through 642 as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat and supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 7A, consideration of bids.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for technical rescue equipment to technicalrescueequipment.com in the amount of $5,088.50. Of this total, the federal AFG grant will cover $4,579.65. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, and at the treasurer to issue payments for the remaining balance of $505,085 from the fire AFG grant account number 101-335-940080 as outlined in 7A.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Baydoun and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun, go ahead.
And, you know, I just want to kind of, you know, I know Chief Brogan always kind of does this, they find grants that are able to cover the, back on for the taxpayers, for the residents, they do a great job at it, and I also just want all the residents to know that, yes, this first grant is covering 400 and, you know, $4,500, the other $505 is being covered by an additional grant. After speaking with Chief Brogan, he explained that to me, so this is actually costing the city $0. So thank you to the fire department for always going above and beyond.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else on item 7A? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8B, Fire Chief Brogan bid award.
Council Chair.
Councilman Coniston, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for hoses, nozzles, and appliances to municipal energy, emergency services, in the amount of $87,519.74. Of this, the federal AFG grant will cover $78,767. In addition, authorize the comptroller to return all the bid bonds to unsuccessful bidders. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, and the treasurer to issue payment for the remaining balance of $8,751.97 from fire AFG grant account number 101-335-9400 as outlined in 7B. And a quick comment, Council Chair.
What?
This is much nicer, clerk, than when I was on the council in the old days, that we had to look at it, and the city attorney said, "We set the motion off."
Sorry, go ahead, she's made our job much easier. Absolutely. Motion made by Councilman Coniston and supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 8A, Public Assistance Grant Acceptance.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council accept the public assistance grant from the state of Michigan in the amount of $1,254,243.51, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign a grant agreement on behalf of the city. These funds will be tracked in GL Public Assistance COVID 101-000635-002 as outlined in 8-8.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight B, payment of summer/winter taxes for city-owned property.
Council Chair.
Uh, let's give this one Councilwoman Breyer. Go ahead.
All right, I recommend the motion that the city, or the Dearborn Heights City Council, approve the payment of summer and winter taxes for the following city-owned properties. Two four zero four five Courier, two four zero nine five Courier, eight two eight six Lenore, five four four nine Pardee, and eight four zero two Nightingale in the total amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and three cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants, the treasurer to issue payment from GL account one oh one dash two hundred dash nine four nine dash zero zero zero, uh, city-owned properties as outlined in eight B.
Support. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer and supported by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just need to explain to the public that when the city buy properties, the first year, we have to pay the taxes before they go in front of the review board and be exempt. But Council Chair, I would like to maybe try to amend this motion and remove the penalties so we don't have to pay penalties. I mean, we're paying ourselves. But as a council body, we're able to amend this motion and remove the penalty from the payment.
Council Chair.
Okay. Well, let me have, because chief of staff was-
I further investigated that with the treasurer in our finance meeting. You can also remove the admin fee, the one percent admin fee, so.
Thank you.
Council Chair, late payments are allowed up to residential properties, you know, by statute. So it's, you know, they give you a grace period. But Councilman Ahmad's point is well paid.
Council Chair. Yeah, they, they only become tax exempt after December thirty-first. That's when exemption goes off.
I think they have to go in front of the board.
Councilman, go ahead.
Uh, I think Councilman has a great idea. Plus, the admin fees, uh, I don't know if we, if you would like to ask Councilwoman Breyer to amend the motion? If she'd like to on that?
Yeah. No problem.
I'd like to amend the previous motion to remove penalties and admin fees. Thank you.
Okay. And motion made by Councilwoman Breyer.
Seconded.
Uh, Councilman Constant, would you like to approve the amendment?
Yes, seconded.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Constant. Uh, with the new amendment from Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight C, Board of Review Appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
Uh, I'd, uh, gonna do this, that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Mrs. Nicole Miller to the Board of Review, term to expire in January of twenty twenty-four. The appointment is to replace Mr. Dana Parrish as outlined in eight C.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
Are these the same Millers that live next door to our Mr. Muscat?
Yes, they are.
This is probably one of the greatest appointments made in the history of Dearborn Heights, I think. Uh, Mrs. Miller was my former lunch monitor. I've known her since I was a young man. So I'd like to believe I'm a young man, but I truly love Mrs. Miller. So if she's on there, congratulations on this appointment.
This is the daughter.
This is the daughter.
Well, even better. She's an attorney.
Yeah.
For anybody that's, uh, wondering. So congratulations to Mrs. Miller's daughter.
Okay.
Miss.
All right. So motion made by Councilman Bedun and seconded by?
Ahmad.
Council?
Ahmad.
Councilman Ahmad. All right. Any other discussion on that? Okay. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item D, Planning Commission Appointments.
I don't think anybody wants to read this here, because the Council Chair.
What's that?
Does Mo want to read it or?
No, he said he doesn't think anybody wants to read it.
Go ahead.
Dearborn Heights City Council concur-
You're, okay, so motion by Councilman Constant, go ahead.
Council Chair. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral reappointment of the following individuals in the planning commission. Uh, Mr. Ken Vegeta, Mr. Jim Joma, Mr. Ali Berry, Ms. Dr. Ali S. Mackey, Ms. Jill Wozlinski, Mr. Hassan Saab, Mr. Sayef Al-Sanad, and Ms. Lisa Ferens Holchansky, all terms to expire twenty twenty-six as outlined in eight D.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Constant, seconded by? Is there a second?
I have a problem with one.
You have a problem with all of them.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's no second, it fails. I just want to make sure it's clear. So is there a second? Okay, wait, guys, please. Madam Clerk? Is that correct? Okay, so motion fails.
Council Chair, may I?
What's?
May I speak about something on this?
Well, okay, that's why I said it didn't-
Even though it failed? Oh, okay.
Well, somebody's got it seconded to have a discussion on it. If there's no second, there's no discussion.
They can comment afterwards, but it's up to the-
They can comment afterwards, right. Right, but my point is, a discussion on it cannot happen unless it's seconded.
I don't know. I mean, it's on the agenda. You can have a discussion.
That's right.
It's true. Public comment.
The second, right, that's what I'm aware of, so. Is there a second? All right. Hearing none? Motion defeated. Okay?
I'll say what I need to say at the end.
Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda is item E, Community and Cultural Relations Commission Martin Luther King Junior Day Walk.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission to hold a Martin Luther King Day Walk on Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three from one AM, one PM to three PM as outlined in eight E.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that?
This is a great honor for Martin Luther King.
Yes, it is.
One of the greatest men that this country's ever had.
Absolutely. And, and I'd like to commend the Community and Cultural Relations Commission uh, for putting this together. They put this together last year. I went on the walk, um, and, and I was honored to be a part of it. And, and I commend the leadership for putting this together because, um, this man deserves much more. There's not enough that we can do. So I, I'm, I'm honored to have been a part of it. Thank you. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine A, Treasurer Hicks Clayton Municipal Disclosure Annual Filing.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive, know, and file the updated twenty twenty-three municipal disclosure annual filing report as outlined in nine A.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun. Councilman Ahmad.
From, from the email that we received from the treasurer, she mentioned something about the Michigan Homeowners Assistant Fund. So I gave her a call, and I guess she did, uh, this is, uh, an agency that help people with, um, like assistant funds for, um, taxes and so on. And I think she did mention that she did, um, send that to them.
Yeah, I'm gonna be reading it.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Okay, no problem. So I'll go ahead and read the comments from Treasurer Hicks Clayton. Please note that the treasurer and PFM, and PFM, I'm sorry, submitted the annual disclosure without the city of Dearborn Heights' annual audit, which we have now. Since the audit has not been completed as of the filing deadline, I'll skip on that. In addition, the two thousand twenty-one property tax collection likely due to economic hardships faced by, faced by families. PFM and Department of Treasury did confirm that they are seeing this trend in tax collections for two thousand twenty-one. In June two thousand twenty-one, Governor Whitmer introduced the Michigan Homeowners Assistant Fund, M I H A F. This program includes federal funds from ARPA, which assists with property taxes for struggling families. After assessing summer two thousand twenty-one collections of property taxes, excuse me. Treasurer Hicks Clayton brought forth the M I H A F program recognizing the needs of our residents. It was requested to be reviewed, I'm sorry, reviewed for consideration by the city council, but was removed from the agenda. CDBG has a program which also uses federal funds but not taxes, which would be the reason. It is my recommendation to review the M I H A F program and offer tax relief support to the families of Dearborn Heights. Uh, I will add something to the treasurer's comments. I spoke with the chief of staff, and administration is definitely working on something, but there's a little bit more logistics to be able to completely launch this program. If you'd like to speak more on that?
Um, sorry, I just wanted to verify that, um, we do have assistance for various organizations within, uh, the RAP program as well as CDBG. So individuals that are in need that would qualify for M I H A F should reach out to both of those programs, which would cover the same items that the M I H A F program would cover. Um, I also wanted to note that the reason she was providing that explanation was because when the audit wasn't completed, the numbers were lower than usual. They were at eighty-five. They are back to ninety-six now. So we're back in the regular, um, range of tax collections. Slightly lower, but not that significantly.
Right, the norm is ninety-nine percent, so.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
So are we signing up with this program or the city?
Not right now. Uh, there are other financial priorities that we have at the moment, and we do have resources available for the residents immediately if they do need, uh, to seek assistance.
I mean, we can apply right now. What's, uh?
There's a lot of financial priorities that are taking place right now. There are resources available for the residents at the moment while we continue to work on the audit and finalizing some financial issues that we're going through.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
Yeah, the RAP program, other assistance for people to pay their water bills. It's now called the Great Lakes Water Authority. They're available to any Wayne County years ago.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion items on this? Now, I, I personally would like to make a suggestion, like we've done this, I've done this in the past, or I've suggested in the past. On this particular item, unless it absolutely has a date deadline, personally, I'd like to set up a study session for this and for the audit and bring in, uh, I can't think of the firm, Young, something and something.
Alan Young.
Uh, Alan Young, thank you. Bring them in and maybe have the treasurer here, have our administration here, and have a study session for the council members so that we can go over a lot of the numbers, the concerns, things that need to be changed, things that need to be worked on, and most importantly, for the future. Because remember, this is up to two thousand and twenty-two, uh, I believe, uh, June thirty-first, if I'm not mistaken. So if the council members are okay with that, and if we're okay as far as deadline-wise, Madam Clerk, I'd like to suggest that we do a study session for this, if that's okay. Would you guys be, would you guys prefer? To this and to the audit? We'll do a study session. I've done this and I've, I've recommended it in the past, and we did it. And I, for myself, found it very valuable that you're bringing in experts in that particular field, the ones that worked on it, and they will tell us what things that they're concerned about. And everyone, including the administration, will know what things that we need to continue to work on for the future. None of, none of us are accountants.
Excellent idea to open to the public.
Yeah, it'll be open to the public, absolutely.
Let's do it.
Great idea.
Okay, so I'd like to, well, if somebody had to, I'd like to motion, well, I can't motion. Can somebody motion to send us back? Who motioned this one?
Councilman Bedun.
Yeah, it was Councilman Bedun.
You want to motion to send us back to administration?
I motioned to send us back to, uh, to administration until we have a study session.
Support.
I, I, I seconded, so I seconded, yeah.
So motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Uh, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, um, used car moratorium.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council extend the moratorium on used car lots in a city for an additional period of one hundred and eighty days as outlined in nine B.
Seconded. Motion made by Councilman Bed, I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat and seconded by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine C, Chief of Staff Hernandez, National Opioid Settlement Year Two Payment Allocation.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
Thank you. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the accept, to approve and accept the National Opioid Settlement Year Two Payment Allocation to the city of Dearborn Heights in the amount of eight thousand four dollars and twenty cents as outlined in nine C.
Seconded.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Constant. Any other discussion on that or any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman, go ahead.
Quickly, yeah, there are all these national-class actions and all the cities join. The big one was, uh, tobacco companies all threw in millions of dollars into this twenty-first century job plan. But kudos to the city to getting our share of this. And, uh, there's been national-class actions against the health insurers. They have to pay the money to some beneficial group. So we're always getting our share of it, and that's good.
Good, good, thank you. Any other discussions on that? Well, uh, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item D, Building and Engineering Director Watland.
Council Chair.
Okay, Nancy, let's go with Councilwoman Nancy.
Okay, I make a recommendation that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of the HP T two-six-hundred multi-function plotter for the building department. In addition, authorize the mayor, comptroller, or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue a one-time payment for the HP, I believe that's Hewitt Packard, T two-six-hundred multi-function plotter out of account number one oh one dash three seven one dash nine eight one dot zero zero zero. Future payments out of account number one oh one dash three seven one dash eight one eight dash, or, or dot zero 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 for monthly services and supplies. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the proposal on behalf of the building department as outlined in nine D.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer and seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item E, nine E.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the master agreement for an additional streetlight to be added to the existing DTE street lighting agreement for the cost of one hundred and twenty-three dollars for installation and additional estimate annual cost of one hundred and seventy-one dollars as outlined in nine E.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine F.
Council Chair.
Fire Chief Brogan. Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the disposal of one two-thousand seven International Rescue Squad via sale to R and R Truck Repair in exchange for twenty-five hundred in credit towards future truck repairs as outlined in nine dash F.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Item nine G, Fire Chief Brogan requests to join Food Truck Inspection Consortium.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the request of the fire department to join a Western Wayne County Fire Department Food Truck Inspection Consortium as outlined in nine G.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Bedun. Any discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine H, Comptroller King Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-one.
Council Chair.
Two thousand twenty-two Financial Statement Audit Report.
Give it to Uncle Bob, please.
Thank you. HP Four Beauty. HP Four Beauty. I move that the city council concur with our comptroller, Ms. King, that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Heights City Council approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two financial statement audit report as outlined in nine H.
Second.
No seconded.
I do.
Motion made by Councilman Constan and seconded by Councilwoman Breyer, any discussion on that?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Are we going to get a presentation from the auditors on what the findings were as we have in the past?
This is, this and the one from the treasurer, I feel, should be put to a study session. So whoever made the motion can amend that. I would highly recommend you amend it to.
I want to say something, Councilman.
Provided, provided that, again, there's no issue, Madam Clerk or Comptroller King as far as dates is concerned. Okay, you had a question?
Well, my question was, were we going to be given a summary of the, like we have in the past where the auditors came in and gave us the summary?
Right.
Because we're approving this now without getting that summary. We usually, we have the summary before we vote on, at least in the past we have. So I was just wondering.
We are prepared to give you a summary.
I mean, that's going to be a while for a whole summary, right? With questions and answers?
We are prepared to give you a summary. I don't know how long that would take or how many questions you may have. So depending on what the timeframe is, if you wanted to just do it in a study session, that's totally up to you.
And because there's no date deadline for approving it, then we could do the study session and just add it back on to receive no file. Would that be okay?
Councilor Chair, I recommend we vote on it. We'll get the summary and to the layperson, you know, but the key is the auditors did the audit and there was no significant findings.
Right.
There were no significant findings.
And we can get the explanation. You just, unless you're an accountant, you look at the findings and there are no significant findings, so let's approve it.
I would, I would concur that, yes.
Okay. Everybody comfortable? Well, I'm not, we're going to vote on approving it, but it actually, it's received no on file, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so motion made by council, who made the motion? Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. In this case, it's going to be approving.
Receive no file.
It's approving.
Well, it says on the motion to approve.
Councilor Chair, we have always accepted or approved the audit. Okay, and we've always had a study session prior to doing that.
Okay, so.
So whatever you guys are comfortable with, I'm sorry.
I'll accept and approve and file the audit from the comptroller's office.
I would take the recommendation of the clerk and maybe table it until we have the study session.
Councilor Chair, everybody's got, got an audit report, the final. So I sent the draft form, the one before it was approved or before it was uploaded. So everybody should have the audit, you know, it was sent to every council member.
Right.
So, so you guys have had a chance for at least, you know, a week or so to review it, you know, so, again, you know, we could still do a study session to have the auditor come in, but we, you know, you can approve it because there's no significant finding.
Right, that's, that's the last page for those.
Page eleven, look at page eleven and.
And I have spiral-bound copies for you as well. I brought them today.
Okay. So the motion is to go ahead and approve it. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. We're still going to have a study session, so Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, I know we spoke with you earlier.
I think we're looking at January thirty-first right now.
The next open day.
That would be the next open day.
Not during a regular meeting.
That's correct.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
And Comptroller King, just to make sure, I know we're going to need the auditors here. I'm sure you'll be here, I'm sure the treasurer will be here. Is there anybody else that you recommend be here just to help just clarify some things for some of the council members?
Plant Moran. Brian.
You'll be here, okay, perfect, beautiful. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next item on the agenda is item eleven, ordinances and resolutions, eleven A. Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the city council renew the business license for fetchers on the beach at five one two seven.
Eleven A.
And Boneyard.
Well, you're on the wrong one.
We're on eleven A. Eleven.
The chair maybe said, I heard it was wrong.
Eleven A.
It was the eleven A. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Wayne County Annual Twenty-Twenty-Three Permit Package. Performance Resolution for Annual Maintenance, Payment Restoration, and Special Events to be performed on Wayne County Road Right of Ways in our jurisdiction during twenty-twenty-three. In addition, authorize the DPW Director, Mr. Conrad, to sign the documents on behalf of the city as outlined in eleven A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constan and seconded by Councilman Bedun, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Aye, any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eleven B.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Michigan Department of Transportation Amdat Annual Twenty-Twenty-Three Permit Package and Performance Resolution for Annual Maintenance, Payment Restoration, and Special Events to be performed on Amdat Road Right of Way in our jurisdiction during twenty-twenty-three. In addition, authorize DPW Director Conrad to sign the documents on behalf of the city as outlined in eleven dash B.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad and seconded by Bedun, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is new business, item thirteen A.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for fetchers on the beach at fifty-one twenty-seven South Beach Daily and Boneyard at seventy-ten North Telegraph as outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bedun, any discussion on that? It's a quick discussion, if you haven't been to the Boneyard, go there, pretty good.
I hear you used to hang out there. Owned by a Macedonian Greek.
Yeah, good people.
And fetchers on the beach.
And fetchers on the beach is another good one.
Originally by the wife of Jack O'Reilly, the former Dearborn mayor.
Oh, really? Oh, nice. Okay, all in favor, please state aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item fourteen, comments from council members.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I want to say something about the non-support for the board that we went through. Until, I believe, city council gets power restored to them on matters pertaining to that, I don't want, I don't want to have anything to do with it, to be honest with you. To me, council is the last resort. When things go bad, everybody points the finger at the council. We are the elected people, and we have to respond to the constituents of this city. And right now, we're not. We're not. We have no control over what goes on in the city, zero, okay? And, and being the elected official, we got all of us, every one of us have got chunks taken out of our rear end over not just the car wash, but a whole lot of other things going on, okay? And it's time the buck stops. And we have to restore that back to city council. I don't know who changed it, why they changed it, but special land use has to come back to council before I approve any appointments. And that's the way I feel.
Now, I emailed, actually, pulled it up, actually, I had Madam Clerk email the study session that we did on that specific subject, and if you guys recall, River Oaks.
Riverside.
Riverside, Riverside. At Riverside, so if, if council members want to be brought up to date, watch that video, it's on YouTube, even residents can watch it, of course. Watch that video, I'll bring you up today as far as the different discussion that went on. If it's a direction, and that's why I told you guys last time when I sent it out to all you guys, if it's a direction that council members want to move towards, then obviously we'd have to do a new study session just to be able to discuss and see if that's a direction.
Councilor Chair, I don't think that a study session is needed. I think a motion should be posed on the table. I can do something for the next council meeting and have it approved and have our corporation council change the ordinance and be done with it. I asked for our former corporation council to do it, and I didn't have any resistance from council members, and it never got done. So I'm tired of the talking and the study sessions.
Okay, guys, but one of the issues, one of the issues on the table is if you have a commission in place and you've appointed them and approved them by the mayor's administration and by the council, we've concurred, if they're going to go back with every single subject coming back.
Nobody said, it's not every single subject.
One second, one second. If every single subject is going to come back to the council, that's going to obviously be problematic, not to mention it's going to dilute what powers, if you want to call it, they have. So if we go in that direction, it would have to be with some sort of conditions as far as what items come back to council instead of almost across the board.
I just say special land use is the big one. And, and I'm sorry, but we've, I've been to these meetings before, I've heard the arguments of pro and con. I don't think the engineer was, did his due diligence, just look at the traffic flow at Ford Road and John Daley, okay? It's horrible, it's going to get worse, and it's to the point where we make Canton, Ford Road and Canton look silly, okay? It's bad enough, it takes you fifteen minutes to go from Outer Drive to Telegraph, and then from Telegraph to Inkster another fifteen minutes at five o'clock in the afternoon, okay? And, and heading east in the morning time, you better stay out of the right-hand lane. You better stay out of the right-hand lane. And, and things are getting approved and getting changed and getting approved, and nobody knows why. So I'm sticking to my guns on this, and anyone who disagrees, you can disagree. But I'm not going to stop something that's legal.
Right.
I know it's on location, I'm just going to fill up the record, I would ask you to remain talking about this, because there's appeal.
I'm not talking about any particular business.
So name addresses or anything like that?
No, I'm not, I just said Ford Road.
He's just advising that we don't discuss it, okay. And again, I'll repeat, for those council members that are taking this into consideration, I would suggest you watch that particular video because it'll clear up a lot of things, because I know there's some newer council members also. Okay, any other comments from council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Robert Constan, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Chair, and again, I congratulate you, the council's running pretty smoothly, things are getting done. And let's just remember, there are always competing interests, but this is a big city, so the state law has a procedure, and we follow, Councilman Muscat is writing, he changes, goes first to the experts. They put the site plan, the city engineer is there, the architect for the development, he says A, B, C, and D. And I recall for, you know, one particular development, there was a lot back and forth. But the alternative is, the property doesn't get developed. Where the Height Shopping Center sits, that was a drive-in theater and a camp years ago before, it was before Lyle Van Houten was there. And Borman Foods, that owned Farmer Jack, filed a lawsuit in circuit court, and they were able to get that property rezoned, and that's what brought us to Height Shopping Center. There was a lot of discussion and divided residential property, so there's the burn around it, the stormwater drains into a retention pond.
After a long battle, after the houses flooded, they ended up redoing it.
But, and Rick Ray, Councilman Muscat knows all.
Been here a long time.
But the point is, that property is now revenue for the city is twenty times what it was, and, you know, I go to that, so it's the best use of the property, but when it comes to us, it's after reviewed by experts, recommendations, so forth and so on.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
And by state law, the, the layman, the city council for the, for example, are left out of it because then everybody's lobbying, they're councilmen, and, you know, we can go around and around, and it's that way with liquor licenses, with other different things.
Okay.
And there are exceptions, car washes, special uses, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilor Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. I also in support, at least, I know there's eight people on, eight member on the board, at least six people to come from, like, experience from a background, and you can have two from the public. I mean, like any other board you're on, at least you have, you know, six people that comes with experience and two people from the public. So really, I would like to see some criteria before we appoint somebody on any board in the city. I also, the week before the holidays, I had the chance to volunteer with trustee Leslie Windless and another crossing guard in a couple of schools after we heard from residents about the traffic, and I was honored that I was accompanied with the chief of police, Chief Hart, just thank you very much, chief, the police department, and the fire marshal. And, I mean, I learned a lot. I do advise the city council too, because you're going to be voting on something about the traffic pretty soon, so I advise you guys to just be there in the field and have a feeling to what's going on. Because after I've been there, to be honest with you, I don't think there's a one solution that fits all. Every school has different issues. Definitely we need paint, definitely we need signage, but every school has a different problem, and there's no one solution that's going to fit every, every, every school. And to be honest with you, I do remember when the chief was talking to us, it starts with us. I mean, the way that people are driving, the way the parents were behaving, I think it starts with us. So I hope the parents, I mean, to see a parent dropping their kid from the far lane, to go, dropping on to cross, to go across different cars to go to school, I mean, that's not something safe. So it starts with us. Definitely the city is working on it, the engineering and the traffic are working on it, we're going to see something soon. But I do, please, if you can do your work and maybe be in the field and just got a sense before you vote on something coming up soon. Happy New Years, everyone, and thank you very much, Councilor.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I'll keep it brief since I know you've asked us to. First and foremost, Councilor Chair, kind of just to piggyback, I know several times you've asked, even when appointing somebody onto these commissions, just to give us a quick biography, what's going on, who is this individual? I'm sure these individuals are very nice, you know, great people, they want to put their best foot forward in the community, but I think ultimately the council should at least get a background check of, not a background check, but just who, who are we supporting of? Because I feel like many times it was blind. For myself, I'd like to know that I believe I knew most of these people here on this planning commission, and they're all amazing individuals from A to Z. My second thing is, I know that Councilman Ahmad, the police chief, fire chief, guys, our trustee, Mrs. Leslie Windless, one above and beyond, putting out volunteering time at the crossguard at the schools on the south end. I actually just want to commend you, tell you, congratulations, that's true leadership in my, in my, in my eyes. I mean, seeing that, and seeing that you took time out of your day to go out and put your best foot forward with the help of the police chief and the fire chief, thank you to our fire department, that really was, like, I was so proud of you, and it was a proud moment, so congratulations on that. Thank you for doing that for the City of Dearborn Heights. Then, moving into twenty-twenty-three, just want to congratulate everybody, let's pray for a happy, healthy, prosperous year. I know we have a lot of work that has to be done here in the city, and I know that we're, we're, the administration, the council, everybody wants to move forward, so we're here to work with the residents at home. Finally, just remember that when you're dropping off your kids at school, just be patient, just be calm, a moment of patience during a moment of anger will save them a thousand moments of regret. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Next, yes, Councilwoman.
Not to be repetitive, but I agree with both Mr. Muscat and Mr. Ahmed, very important items.
Thank you. Next up is announcements from administration.
Councilor Chair.
Yes.
I have an announcement?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Next Tuesday, there will be a special meeting that begins at five-thirty. It will strictly be a closed session. I just wanted to announce that so that your audience is aware. We will hold the special meeting, and within that, there will just be a closed session.
I think we have to say what it's about.
Yeah, what's the agenda about?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have an agenda, one of his, one of the items is union negotiations, and the other one is leased properties. As council members will recall, we did have a training session with the Michigan Municipal League, and I spoke with the Michigan Municipal League today to clarify, we have always had our closed sessions within a special meeting, okay? At that training session, Coco, the parliamentarian, said that we could do it, to motion to do it prior. So when I was talking to Michigan Municipal League today, the woman I spoke with said that our state law is very open, or very thorough on the Open Meetings Act, but that, but that on the closed session, it's not so much. So to contact your corporation counsel, which I did today. And prior to this meeting, I spoke with corporation counsel, and he did share an email that was sent to Mariana regarding that back in November. But it's the clerk's office, I, as you know, I think that our whole office is a team. So we discuss, and I bounce the ideas.
Because we're actually a family.
Yes, we are, yes, we are. And I spoke with Dana, who was the prior council secretary, and is the deputy clerk now, George Ann was in the conversation, and we think that it's logical and more transparent to start the meeting as a special meeting as we, as within, and have that closed session, obviously, within the open meeting. So that's why we're just announcing it today so that everyone's aware of it and we can be ready for next Tuesday.
Okay.
That was done for years.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
What's it? That was done for years of having closed sessions.
In a study session.
Tuesdays for many years.
Yes.
Before the meeting without any.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't even, it was a study session.
Correct.
Right.
And they went into closed session and.
And they just did it, yeah.
Madam Clerk, is the point of clarification, we're going to take the vote when we do the open meeting next.
That's correct. That's correct. We were just announcing it now so that people will know, and this way, it's all, okay, yes, George, for as long as I've been in the office, I said, and others know, we have four yes. Well, this way, all of that information is going to be on the date that it actually occurs.
And I can tell you guys, as a council chair, the primary reason for this, these are all formalities that we have to all follow, but the primary focus on my end for this is, one of my personal peeves was we'd be having a regular council meeting, and then we'd go into a closed session, meanwhile, the audience, and on Zoom, well, that was before Zoom, but the audience would be just sitting there not knowing how long our meeting in a closed session is going to take, and they'd be sitting there for an hour, two, sometimes three, and they have no idea when we're going to finish, wouldn't even know when we're going to finish, and then we'd come back and have some very frustrated members know that they sat for three hours only to have us come back and say, okay, now we have ended our closed session, we're going into an open session, and meeting adjourned, and that was a little irritating, because I'd be irritated. And, and that was a little irritating, because I'd be irritated. So we're just doing them on off days, but we're making the announcements so we can follow the formalities.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I guess quickly, this is a big issue for the short term, I worked for in the Dearborn Law Department. The rules are to make the, our whole process transparent.
Yes.
Another city, and they have a, they voted in closed session, they came out and then said, we voted A, B, and C. And that was a big violation. You discuss it, then as, as we do, and say, we discussed A, B, and C, and we decided, and we voted yes, no.
Thank you, Councilman.
The council chair is next.
Any other announcements from administration? Come on up. And earlier, I was commending the leadership of the council. This is one of them here, so thank you for putting the MLK walk together.
Appreciate that. Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and City Administration. My name is Latina Gator, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County, here to speak on behalf of the Dearborn Heights Community and Cultural Relations Commission as chairperson. I have three announcements, three announcements, sorry, but first, I want to thank the city council for approving our walk route. We are hosting the MLK Day Walk of Service, as Councilman Muscat said, on January the 16th, 2023, to begin at Annapolis High School, to end at Party Elementary School. We're starting at 1:00 p.m., we're ending at 3:00 p.m. We will have warming refreshments, donuts, and things to keep our participants warm and happy. We will have an art station for those who want to create posters. We will have guest speakers there, which is a bit of a twist than what we did last year. We will have Dearborn Heights D7 Superintendent Dr. Weeks guest speaking. We will have NAACP Western Wayne President Gina Wilson Stewart there, and we will have Michigan Supreme Court Justice Kyra Harris Bowden also as a guest speaker. So we welcome you all out to come. We want everybody to get there safe and sound, but again, we want to echo the true message of MLK Day on that event. Thank you. My second announcement is that the CCRC drafted a anti-racism, anti-discrimination resolution. We did forward that to City Administration in December with the request that it be given to corporate counsel to make sure that it is legally permissible, because we want that language to be tight. And then our hope is to read that to the city council to be considered for adoption. So we're hoping to get to work on that anytime soon. And again, whatever process we need to take to make that official, we'd be happy to do it. The last announcement is that we will possibly have at least one voting member position open on the CCRC, since one of our members have been inactive since the summer. And then, of course, kudos to you, Council Chair Abdullah, for serving on that commission as ex officio. But with your resignation, we'll also have that position open very soon. Both of those are mayoral appointments, so we hope to get those filled so we can continue the DEI work for the city. Thank you.
Any other, any other announcements from administration? Chief of Staff Hernandez?
Hi, I have a clarification question. There is a planning commission meeting scheduled for this Thursday, so I don't know what the legal consequences of those are. Was it canceled?
In other words, with no members?
If, if there's no members and residents have paid to get this reviewed by planning, what are the consequences of that, et cetera? So I don't know if the clerk can verify when the next meeting is, and the corporation counsel can verify what the consequences are with regards to that.
Probably best practice for that is to have clerks, so we don't have to rush into this right now. Between yourself and the corporation counsel, if you guys can look into it, and maybe make an announcement on our website tomorrow, just confirm.
It's due in two days, so it's, time is of the essence. And if a vote is necessary, then we may require to have another special meeting before that meeting to make sure it's happening within 24 hours.
Okay, should double check that.
On another note, I have news with regards to American Rescue Plan Act funds. There is a survey available right now on the website. It's very brief. It's to get the opinion of our residents on what the top priorities are for the funds that we have available. Our management company is running that survey and looking for input from the residents. So we encourage everybody to please tell us what their priorities are with regards to our American Rescue Plan funds. There's a little description there about what each of the categories are. You can hover over it, and it will give you a little description of what those are. And it will just ask you to prioritize which areas you're most interested in. We will then have a public hearing about those responses as well, and hear the public in person as well. Hopefully, it'll be available to the public for about a month. So, spread the word.
Thank you. Any other announcements from administration? Hearing none. I don't think there's anybody on Zoom for that. Next up is public comments. You will have three minutes. Please come on up. I'm sorry.
What about elected officials?
Sorry? No, well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to have her go up during the public comments. I, I talked to her already. I talked to the state representative already. Let's have, you know, you want to come on up?
Yeah.
First, come on up.
I don't know if I even want to. She's here.
They're so busy, they got so much going on. I mean, I, sorry that we stuck you guys through it all, but.
Good evening, everyone. Do you need my name and address for the record?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Not, just street only, not, not the address.
Okay, certainly. Erin Burns, Queen Street, Dearborn, Michigan, 48124.
You guys do that in Dearborn?
We do. Yes, we do. Former council member. So yes, this is all, all very familiar to me as well. But thank you all so much for having us tonight. Good evening, Council Chair Abdullah, honorable council members, Mayor Bazey, and I know Clerk Sinia was here as well. My name is Erin Burns. I am the new state representative for House District 15. Thank you. Thank you. And the new district encompasses all of Dearborn Heights with the one exception of Precinct 8, and the majority of the West End of Dearborn. So I'm here tonight with my constituent services director, Micho Assi, who will introduce herself as well. And again, thank you all for having us. We really appreciate your time and all of the work that you do as a former Dearborn City Council member. I know how important the local work is. So I really applaud you all for that, and thank you for having us tonight. I'll be brief. I just wanted to kind of introduce myself and Micho as well, and wanted to share with folks that our office in Lansing is now up and running. We have a fabulous team, and we're really excited. We're going to be starting our first day of session in Lansing tomorrow. And then from there, we will be in Lansing Tuesday through Thursday, and we'll be home here in the community all other days of the week. And we're really excited. We have a wonderful team, and we are really looking to be active in the community and be present. So you can expect to see our team at meetings and events throughout town. And again, we will be present as much as humanly possible. So I think we're really passionate about public engagement and service to the community. We look forward to working hand in hand with all of you. And now that, I think everybody's kind of getting back in the swing of things and back in action with the new year, we will be reaching out to schedule meetings with, of course, all of you, if we haven't yet. And again, we look forward to working with you, and I think gauging the needs and hopes and concerns of all of our residents. So we're excited.
Can you give us, can you give us a phone number in case some resident needs to reach your office, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Phone number, and if anybody has problems with unemployment.
Certainly. Yes. So I'd be happy to, I think the easiest thing to do would probably be to share my email address, because that's where everything will be funneled through. And my email address will be erin, E-R-I-N, burns, B-Y-R-N-E-S, at house.mi.gov. So that is my email, and that also gets shared with Micho and Brooke, who is our legislative director. So that's the best way to reach our team, and everything will be kind of funneled in that direction.
517.
Yep, yep. We'll share that in just a moment. And I'm also happy to share, I always give out my personal cell number, so I'm happy to share that as well. You guys don't want, I gave it out in all my campaign literature, so it is out there, and I'll share it. It's 313-850-7720. And Micho will share our office number in just a minute. She'll kind of go over that point of contact info a little bit more as well with everyone. And I'm happy to answer any other questions, if there are any, and then I'll turn it over to Micho in just a moment. Certainly, yes. Thank you so much on this point. So a question about legislative priorities. I'll start by talking about, I think, some concrete district needs, and then I'll go into that kind of legislative policy component. So I know we were talking with Councilwoman Ahmad the other day, and I said, you know, the first thing when anybody, you know, asks me about my district, I always say Dearborn Heights and Dearborn. And for the heights, we know funding for Ekorst Creek. Cleanup is huge, Councilwoman Breyer, I know that's near and dear to your heart. So that's the first thing that I mentioned. And then we also know that funding and support is needed for a new fire station. And so those are the two things that I always mention right off the bat. Folks, I hope are not tired of hearing that yet in Lansing, because they're going to continue to hear it. So I'll be driving those points home. And again, we want community feedback. We'll be scheduling coffee hours and attending events and scheduling our own to meet with folks to gauge some of those additional needs. Those are two, I think, concrete, kind of financial asks that we'll have on behalf of the district in Dearborn Heights specifically. In terms of legislative priorities, we have a really exciting day in Lansing tomorrow, I think, caucus-wide. And folks will see that as press releases roll out in the morning. I can't share anything just yet, but it's going to be a very exciting day on Wednesday. I think a lot of things that will be really kind of kitchen table issues for residents and for folks across our state will be addressed. And then, in terms of our office, there are a variety of things that we're looking at. Addressing climate change, again, kind of tying that back to Ekorst Creek, and also the Rouge River, the flooding that we've seen in our district, and really throughout a variety of areas in our state, that will be a key priority for us. So we'll be doing a lot of work with folks who will be on the Energy Committee. That's really important as well. And so that's something that we'll be looking at. We're also looking at pay equity. We want to make sure that all of our residents, especially folks from identity backgrounds that tend to be underpaid, are not dealing with those issues in the way that we've seen in the past. So that's really critical as well. And then, for myself, as a longtime educator, I'm coming off of ten years at the University of Michigan, certainly making sure that our schools, our kids, our teachers have the funding and the resources they need, not only to get by, but really to thrive. We know that that is something that's critical for success, and then socioeconomic mobility later in life as well. So many, many things that we have on our plate, but we're always open to adding more. So as we're speaking, and as we're kind of talking about some of these initial priorities, again, we will be really present and active in the community so that our residents, our elected officials, are informing our priorities. So we have a deep bench and a really talented team, and so we look forward to adding more priorities as we go.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you know your committee assignments yet? And you're going to work on getting Dearborn Heights and Dearborn.
Right.
Our share of the state's year revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll mention, and everybody has, gets a letter from the state of Michigan.
Mm-hmm.
They got laid off, they got money from unemployment.
Right.
The system is spitting out, you owe $40,000, whatever, and you're, you're supposed to be able to go on the web. It's, it's a nightmare.
Yeah.
The former director, Jeff Donafrios, for Allen Park, got fired.
Yeah.
That people can contact your office best via the website.
Yes.
And then your staff will help the constituent free of charge try to work out this best.
Correct.
And, and find out if they do owe the money back or they don't.
Certainly.
You didn't know you had another staff member, did you?
I know, I know. A former, former representative, yes, very knowledgeable. I appreciate that.
Your, your phone number here, which is always, I have a couple in mind, but I'm, be quiet.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilman Conston. So to answer your first question, we don't have our committee assignments yet. And for folks at home or in the room who may be watching, representatives are typically assigned when you're in the majority, which, as a Democrat now, I will be, very fortunate in that sense. We are looking at having four to five committee assignments per representative, and we will be made aware of those committee assignments this Thursday. So we don't know yet. We have submitted our preferences, and so we'll see kind of where those chips fall. But we'll know on Thursday, and we'll be sharing updates as we have that information on social media with folks. So more to come on that.
Who's the council, or the caucus chair?
Our caucus chair is Representative Amos O'Neil. Yep. And then, Councilman, I know you also referenced unemployment, and yes, there will be information on our website, and our staff will be happy to assist any residents who may need that.
And regarding unemployment, Secretary of State agencies.
Correct.
Your office is a direct help, Medicaid coverage.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Randolph's a good friend of mine, by the way. I've already let him know that you're on your way there, and.
Fabulous.
So he'll be reaching out to you.
That sounds good.
Apparently, I guess.
Thank you so much.
Micho, you said you also want to say something.
Yes, I don't want to keep you all too long. I can, let me step aside. And Micho, if you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Micho on North Franklin Street in Dearborn, but I'm closer to Dearborn Heights. I just want to share our contact information, our website, house.mi.gov. And this is the best way where you can sign out, sign up for updates and newsletters, and also I'm gonna, and you can always attend the sessions online on that website. And the phone number for our office, 517-373-0847. I'm going to repeat it one more time, 517-373-0847. And like, also via email is one great way to email us, erinburns@house.mi.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Micho. And thank you, state representative. I appreciate it.
State, the state representative, please say hello to my good friend Darren Camilleri when you see him. Tell him I said hello.
Thank you, I will. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comments? Come on up. Crestwood High School, anybody coming up? You, you guys are going to get graded on this, so if you don't come up.
Come on, guys. It's not so bad.
Huh?
Oh, you just gotta walk up and say something. You guys are doing a good job.
Come line up behind me. Rachel.
If you come up, I'll call you a teacher, make sure you get an A+.
They're saying her getting it anyway.
Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Apologies for bursting out. That was my ADHD impulsiveness, kind of getting the better of me and being excited about our new state representative and all the great things she's going to do. While I was sitting here, I really quickly looked up planning commission requirements, our ordinance, but there's also a state law from 2008 about planning commissions, which prob, I'm looking forward to reading that probably tonight or tomorrow. It does say, though, that a, the membership of a planning commission shall be represented of the important segments in the community. This is reflected in our ordinance as well, such as the economic, governmental, educational, and social development of the local unit of government, in accordance with the major interests as they exist. I will say that, looking at our planning commission, I don't know that that necessarily reflects all of the different aspects of our community. I don't think anybody's a low-income person, maybe somebody that works retail or restaurant. I believe I've talked to you about this before, Council Chair. I don't think our planning commission does represent the community fully. Our ordinance also states, and I'm sure the administration will be looking at this, that a member of the planning commission cannot serve in any other municipal office. One of the proposed candidates who's currently on the planning commission, Mr. Fajita, who's a great guy, we just realized, he's on the CCRC as well now. I'm not sure if that counts as a, an appointed office, a municipal office. I, I'm not, the definitions were not in that section of our ordinances. That would be something for legal to look into. My sort of common law, common sense definition of that as a resident would be that a municipal office would be any office in the city, because the planning commission is such an important commission, and it is the only paid commission. They should not be serving the city in any other way, because that would be a major conflict of interest, in my opinion, as a resident. I would hope that that would be the interpretation, but that would be up to them, and I don't need, like, I would want to hear from legal on that. No offense to you.
I had that from legal. I was, yeah, so I ran into this, if that's okay with you, Council Chair. I was on the council, I was on the CCRC. The question was, I wasn't allowed to serve with both. I actually got a phone call saying that I had to step down from the CCRC, because I'm on the council and I get paid, and I challenged our former.
That was a different situation from how this is written, though.
You're an ex officio.
It was, no, no, there was, there was, I understand the situation that you had, and I, I remember that pretty well. It is different from this one, because the way it's written, and you're an elected official, planning commission's appointed. So it's a difference between an appointed and an elected. There were different parts to the charter.
You might be right.
We can talk about it more after, because I don't want to waste everybody's time on that discussion.
Thank you.
But thank you. So just for the definition purposes, there is a definition for qualifications, but it's kind of broad, and it's just supposed to reflect the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up. Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, doctors. Come on up. I commend you for having the courage. Come on up.
Thank you. Do I have to say my name and address?
Just your name, street only, and city.
All right, my name's, I'm Sammy Dubasey, Berwin Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
And grade?
12th grade. My dad is Hassan Dubasey. He knows you.
President of the Jew Society?
Yeah, that's him.
Your, your father is a PhD, and your mother's a student.
Yep, that's him. All right, I'm gonna keep it short, but our, our teacher told us that if I get a selfie up close, that we get extra credit. So can I just go get a selfie like?
Come on, turn around.
My teacher is Mr. Kiderka.
Who's your teacher?
Kiderka, Crestwood High School. All right. I don't know how far I should go.
We're going to send his picture to Mr. Alhadi. Here, give me a, I'll take the picture here. Go. Why don't you guys all, come on, you guys can all get extra credit. Just squat, just squat down a little bit, yeah.
There you go, come on. No, no, the guys, move over, come on. You guys want them behind you. Get in there, get in there, get in there.
Yeah, yeah, this guy knows. He might be a nice councilman. Take your job, Dave.
Shala.
Go Chargers.
Thank you. Now, I have an objection. I thought they came here because they enjoyed this, and now I'm finding out the teachers forced them to come here. Huh? That's right, that's right. All right, anybody else? Doctor, you had a public, oh, I'm sorry.
Gentlemen. Go ahead.
Okay. My name and my street.
Yeah, just name, street, city.
Okay, my name is Abbas Ayub, and on Nightingale Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I came here to thank you, councilmen, for this opportunity to host us here. And we found this really interesting, at least me, at least. I'm not sure if the rest of my schoolmates found it interesting, but just, I thank you for me, that's all.
I appreciate you coming by. Anybody else? Okay?
While they're walking up, there is not a planning commission meeting this month.
Okay, so formal announcement, there's not a planning commission meeting this Thursday. That, it wasn't canceled. That, it wasn't canceled because what happened today, there is not one. Go ahead, sir.
A few things. One, my name is Ali Fawaz, I live on Fenton, actually, Dearborn Heights. Two, I wanted to say how cool this was. I don't really have anything specific to say, I kind of wanted to do this to say that I did it.
Good.
This really was cool, it was awesome.
I love you, man.
It's, my guy. See, I gets it.
He cheats on you a lot because he loves everybody over there.
No, it's fine.
Love is in the air, man.
Love is in the air. I actually do have a request. Can I take my Be Real, right now?
Your what?
My Be Real.
What does that mean? I don't know what I'm committing to, I'm an old man.
It's a picture.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead.
You're not in school, you can do whatever you want in here.
Not quite. So, it's far.
But you know what a Polaroid is, see?
Oh, I know what a Polaroid is.
You do?
It's a, it's a picture.
No, I don't know what it is.
Thank you, everyone.
Go ahead.
Also, just sorry, I'm so sorry. One more thing.
You only get three minutes.
I'm done soon. I'm only gonna reference this because I know how much my teacher, Mr. Kaderka, shout out, he's, he's very, he's very, how do I say, lively when it comes to this topic? How would, is there, is there a possibility in the future for the city of Dearborn to have bike lanes? Because it's very.
Dearborn Heights or?
Dearborn Heights, Dearborn Heights, sorry.
Well, Detroit just got them, I think we're on our way to.
Because, all right, thank you. Now I can tell them I asked. Thank you, guys.
You could let the teacher know, Mr. Kaderka, he taught my kids, one of the best teachers and the most passionate teachers I've ever met. I used to always enjoy conversations with him, very good teacher.
No, he's a fun teacher.
Yes, he is.
Thank you, guys.
Come on up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mustafa Hassan, I live in Woodshire Street, I'm a junior in Crestwood High School. So, I was actually nervous to ask you about this because I thought maybe you guys don't have like jurisdiction over this topic, but I want to talk about the school funding. I feel like some schools in Dearborn Heights might require a little bit more funding. Like, personally for Crestwood High School, the weight room is like, it's a bit outdated, the weight's a bit old, it can use like some renewalment, if you can, I don't know if that's a word, but renewalment.
It would be the school board. Unfortunately, it's a school board. It's okay, you can finish your statement, continue, continue.
Yeah, so, like renewalment, equipment, newer equipment, the desks, maybe like fixing up some stuff for the school, and that's about it.
Well, here's a good news for you. So although we're not the jurisdiction that looks over that, but you've made it now public, and the newspaper's got it now, so now you've got, you've given it publicity, so it's a start. And then we have a former school board member here, she was on the school board, our clerk, so she'll make sure and make the right calls.
And we have the state rep, too.
And the state rep will work on it.
Maybe we'll ask our state rep for some funding for Crestwood High School.
Wait a minute, not just Crestwood, but all the schools in Dearborn.
Well, he called for Crestwood, I'm just saying.
I just took as an example, because I go to that school.
So you got the process started, thank you.
I don't know if this is like the place for it, I just want to say just in case.
It's always the place for it.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mustafa.
Come on up. I'm sorry? No, ladies first, we gotta go ladies first.
Hello, everybody, the last time I came in here, I got appointed, so I'm very excited to be back. I have some very exciting announcements about the CCRC. Oh, I forgot. My name is Madison, I live on Edgewood Street here in Dearborn Heights.
Thank you, go ahead.
I am a member of the CCRC, I'm very excited to announce our new elected officers. We held this election at our last meeting. Latonya Gator, she is our chairperson once again. I'm very excited to announce that I am taking over as vice chair, and I'm also, I'm also keeping my chair as corresponding secretary. And then we of course have the lovely Kenji Fujita as our secretary this year. I just wanted to thank the board and the mayor for my opportunity to be sitting on this commission. This is my second one in my seventeen, almost eighteen years on this planet, and I just wanted to say big ol' so much for the opportunity and believing that I deserved this spot. So I just want to say thank you, guys, and I hope you have a wonderful new year.
Best of luck, thank you.
You're doing a great job.
Okay, apologize to the doctor, who's next, and you're next. Okay, go ahead.
Abraham Dubajah, Kenmore, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
No, not in this one, this is my.
I'll be brief. I'm back to the planning commission thing. First thing, I want to thank Councilman Muscat, Councilman Breyer, Councilman Wensley, he's not here, I'm sure he's gonna hear it. I want to thank you guys for championing our rights as residents and really standing up for us, making sure that our elected officials are the final say in the city of Dearborn Heights. I will say, I agree with Councilman Ahmad, the criteria has to be there. I mean, we can't have people on planning commission that has no checks and balances being appointed without background, so I think the first step is to produce some kind of criteria for our planning commission members. And the second, my personal recommendation, obviously, it'd go back to you guys. You guys have nine commission members. I love council Lisa, I think she should be the chair, be honest with you. And then you have another eight members. You have eight members, I believe council should pick four, and administration should pick four, and you guys should both agree on a chair and get it over and done with. If, if it's not feasible for you guys to re-change the ordinance back to how they were in 2007 where special land use comes in front of council. I know council would be doing mention, I think Council Ahmad mentioned it. I agree, not, not all planning decisions, especially if they have engineering, planning, architect, should come to city council, but special land uses should. Again, I've mentioned this for months and months, and I've racked my brain around it. Again, for the residents to know, like gentlemen's clubs, you know, pharmaceutical facilities, big box retailers, those are all special land uses. As it is now, planning commission makes the final say without council. You guys have nothing to do with it, and that's in contrast to many major cities in the city of Michigan. So either keep Lisa as the chair, you guys get four, admin gets four, or change the ordinance. I know we have a majority of the council that's for it. Special land uses can be approved by planning, but you guys make the final say, because the way it is when we, the residents, a thousand one hundred of us stood in front of the planning commission for this debacle on Ford Road, we specifically were told on record, you guys can review it, by the council attorney, you guys can listen to the residents, but they have no say, and they cannot sway your vote. Look at the criteria, if they meet, they meet. And Councilman Conston said they're spurned experts. I doubt the experts, honestly. If you read through some of the stuff, like when Wade Trim. Yeah, criteria. But when Wade Trim says something like, oh, we're not really prepared to answer that, but they still voted on it, hundred percent, on the record. When county, when attorney Harry said, you know what, that seems like a criteria, but it's a capitalistic, is there really a need? Like, did the city actually say we need six car washes, there might be two car washes, I'll leave it up to the commission to decide. These are very vague things, and if they have detrimental impacts on your residents, you guys should be our elected officials and held accountable for it. And I'll thank you very much, thank you for much, Mr., I mean, Councilman Abdullah for giving me extra time, and I thank you guys very much, and I gotta get going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just real quick. Mr. Dubajah, I know you said early on that you and I said we were gonna speak, I believe I was walking out of Walgreens, I said we'll have a conversation.
Yeah.
You never followed up, I never followed up. I want to say that, just so it doesn't make it seem like I never returned your phone call or I didn't communicate back with you. I never received an email nor a phone call.
According to attorney counsel, you can't, there's still pending litigation.
I can have a conversation with anybody I want. If you want to call me, you're welcome.
So we'll talk about it later, but I guess Councilman Muscat, I guess you guys are gonna move forward with hopefully getting your own rights restored, and that's what the residents want.
The purpose of the conversation means you're back and forth, I never received the phone call nor an email from you.
That's fine. I'm over it, I'll see if you can.
Anybody else from the residents in the audience? Yeah, he's next, I'm sorry.
Hi, Mohammed Murray, Kingsbury, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. This has been my primary residence with my parents for about fourteen years now. I did a inspection to obtain a COVO, this was eight years ago. I came into city hall twice in December, within a day of each other, and I spoke to a staffer at the building department in regards to possibly doing changes on my title, removing, either removing me or adding my mother onto the title. I was informed by the staffer that if I do any changes, whether adding or removing, a inspection will have to be done on the property. I came back the next day, and the staffer that runs the assessor's department walked me over and witnessed the staff, the same staffer, tell me the same exact thing that she told me the previous day. I was a little bit concerned because I felt like I was misinformed when I started asking questions to people within the city. I came in and I spoke with the mayor, who then gave me the contact information of Eric, who runs the building department. I found out that the, if you're only adding someone to the title, that you will not need to do an inspection. I was misinformed. Now I'm having to do another inspection, even though that this is a primary residence for my family and we have not moved. So with that information, and I do have a recording, I recorded the conversation with the staffer, with that information, do you guys have the power to waive that?
Okay. So what I suggest, sir, in this particular case, because this is a specific case, I'd suggest that you give your name and number to the chief of staff, and then she will connect you with the white person and have that looked into.
Council Chair?
Yes.
I think he's talking about the fee because of just the way, the way it was brought up. So I know we had that conversation, we talked to the assessor, and they pretty much told him basically what was presented was something different. So he would have to go into the form and put down that they're actually not changing ownership, they're just moving his mom and putting his name on. But then what was presented to the building department, you know, so they got like a different story, or maybe they misinterpreted, I don't know what happened there. So they scheduled for an inspection, so he had to pay for the inspection. So what he was told that, and we cannot waive that fee because it was already.
The city inspection.
Yes, so that's what he's.
Sorry to interrupt you, we have not done it yet, so I'm trying to get.
No, no, but the fee, the fee's already, that's what I mean, it was already, it's there, so that's, that's what Rick told you, I talked to him today. He said, he told you basically that you have to go in front of council, because when the money comes into the city or something is already sent to the city that we cannot, he cannot waive it, he has to go in front of council.
Okay, so are you saying, Mayor, that this was based on miscommunication, it was accidentally implied to him, he needs a city inspection, in reality, he doesn't, and therefore he should get his money back, is that correct?
Well, okay, so again, I don't want to say nothing, there's, you know, I think we should have a conversation outside here.
That's what I said.
But there was, there was different stories that was from, again, I wasn't there, but from what I was told, you know, something was said other than what's supposed to happen, and maybe he misunderstood the process.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I have it recorded, so when I spoke with the staffer.
So, so wait, Councilman, I don't want to do a trial here.
I'm just letting you know.
No, I respect that, and you're gonna have your right, of course. If you don't mind, if you could give your name, number, and address.
Okay.
To the chief of staff, and she'll make sure that she'll connect the white people in charge, look into this for you, and get back with you.
Okay.
If it ends up where it doesn't have to be council, it'll have to be something, we'll add on agenda, and I'll make sure I approve it, and I will vote from there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Council Chair, young man, was it Mahad? When you, when the deed was filed, the person who filed the deed needed to send into the assessor's office a property transfer affidavit, because it was a transfer amongst family members for less than a hundred dollars, it's exempt. If no one filed a property transfer affidavit, then, but you don't, you get your legal advice from, you know, an attorney, or you don't get it from the person at the desk, because, so if the house was sold, somebody bought it for eighty thousand dollars, it has to be re-inspected, a COVO with their person's name. If your mother's living there, you're living with her, you are put on the title. Whoever recorded that deed should have sent to the assessor in the city, in this case Dearborn Heights, a property transfer affidavit, and then no, no, new inspection, no anything.
We did that.
But you wait, you wait to hear, hear from.
No, we did it the same day.
The city, you don't go to the counter, I would suggest, and ask, because you'll get four different answers.
We did it the same exact day. Like, I went right over to the office and I told them, here's what I'm trying to do.
But did you file the property?
On the same exact day.
You did.
I came, you can see that, you can see that when the deed was filed with Wayne County, and when I came over here, same exact day.
Well, the city follows the rules, so we'll leave it to the administration, but you, I, you know.
And I did speak with an attorney, so I did all, before I did anything, I asked all my questions, and I have every, every record, conversation recorded.
So.
Because I knew something like this was gonna happen.
Sure. So if you could do me a favor, if you could take your, actually, I think earlier in the day, earlier in the meeting, I seen Rick Watland online, so, yeah, he is online, so I don't know if he's heard it or not, but either way, he's heard this, at the very minimal, he'll have access to the recording of this. If you could give your name, number, and, and address to the chief of staff right there with their laptop, and then she'll make sure somebody will contact you and go look into it.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Okay, come on up.
Can you pass them over to the clerk first?
Mohammed Jani, Evangeline, Dearborn Heights. While you guys are getting these, first I'd like to address the, the young people here from Crestwood. It's nice that they're here to visualize, experience, and see things live that happens in the cities that hopefully you'll stay in and raise families in, and get involved, because you need to get involved. Because this all affects you and your futures, if you stick around. That being said, again, before I get into what I'm about to talk about, I want, different, different topic, the crosswalk. Months ago, city council mentioned something, I contacted Ray, and can you give me a little clarification on what's going on with the crosswalk beach daily?
It would be the best person to answer that for you.
Who?
Ali Deep.
Oh.
City, in city and.
Please make it quick, because I still gotta talk.
Well, I got the time, I got the time pause.
We'll subtract that from your time.
Take your time.
Wait, wait, Mr. Deep, if you don't mind, so come up on the microphone. No, 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 we want to subtract from the time.
Story.
Okay, so the project is already designed and ready for construction. Funding is proposed for MDOT, and it's currently being reviewed for funding next construction season.
What exactly is going to happen? I'm not.
Crosswalk, digital, I mean, full crosswalk with on-demand.
Beautiful.
Yeah. Both sides, similar to U of M Dearborn.
Okay.
So on-demand, full state of the art.
Kids walk up to the corner, they press the button, and then the light will come on, and that's in front of the fire station?
No, it's actually further, there is a code requirement, it's two hundred feet from
So it's the next street.
Closer entry to the.
Lawrence.
To the school.
Lawrence Street. Lawrence Street.
No, to the stadium, or whatever, football field.
Further south than that.
Football field, closer to football.
There's Wilson, then I think there's Lawrence.
Closer to the football field.
Yes.
Two hundred feet south of Wilson, of, of-
North or south?
South. So it's, it's, it was selected, it was-
North of Wilson.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so it's actually, it's actually-
So it's between Lawrence and Wilson?
Yes, Lawrence and Wilson.
That's weird.
No, no.
Where we wanted it.
No, that's, I wanted it, I wanted it at, in front of the fire department, that's why I wanted it.
There is, there is a-
Well, it's just gonna be a little bit, little bit further south, just a little bit south.
More towards the front entrance, rather than the actual-
In the middle of both sides.
Where the seniors are driving out, it's gonna be closer to the front entrance.
Okay.
Because you can't have a stoplight between the fire department and then right, right there, that'd be too, like, you know, imagine a car stopping between you two.
So there is an emergency stop before the fire department, it cannot be used for pedestrian crossing, it is designated as emergency vehicle only. So we've, we've designed it, we've actually done a survey, and designed the proper distance or proper location for pedestrian crossing, and it's already been reviewed by MDOT, and, and highly, you know, ready for funding.
I don't know if you can speak to it, but I know there was rumors about the fire department being not stated.
Yeah, 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 we can, that's also, that's a separate issue.
So is that gonna come down?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet, it's being studied.
Okay, so if, oh, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead.
If, if and when that goes down, is that gonna possibly be moved over to that particular crosswalk? No?
Yeah, it's not, it's, that fire station is a whole separate situation, nothing to do with that.
So a situation, okay. But at least we're gonna get something.
Yep.
The crosswalk will be state of the art.
Okay. When do you think it might be a come?
If the funding, so we're scheduled for funding by MDOT in the spring of twenty-three, so that's, we haven't heard the actual approval.
Coming up.
It's coming up, yeah.
Okay, thank you, I needed that clarification.
No problem.
As I passed out to you gentlemen, there's three items, and this is in section, part of the, section thirty-six dash four ninety-three, authority to approve site plans. And I highlighted three things in this document that I sent, presented to you guys, I like, yeah, I would like you guys to really, really take your time and review this, because this is what's happening. And it's important for us, and hopefully for you, based on your guys' actions tonight, which pleasantly floored me, I appreciate what you guys did tonight, and it means a lot to the residents, more than you can imagine, because the planning commission, I don't know how anyway to say it, was corrupt. And that's my opinion, and that's my opinion, and that's how I feel about it, and thank you for voting it down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience, come on up?
Leslie Winless, Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, four eight one two five. My comment today is just, I wasn't going to speak, but I felt like the topic of the resolution was kind of brushed over, and I'm not a fan of not addressing the elephant in the room, and sometimes I feel like when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion things, I think everybody's on board when it's time to do the events and the public stuff, which I think is, is all great, I think we need both, though. We need the resolution to pass, the backend work in conjunction with the public events. So the resolution was put forth to you all for approval, because we are getting several community members that have come, meeting after meeting, and this has been brought in front of you at least three times over this last year, related to the city continuously funding programs in the city that have racist mascots, and it is impacting Native Americans and Indigenous people who feel very strongly about it, and they've come to several meetings, they're only asking for you not to provide funding to the team until they change their name, and for you to adopt policies that prevent businesses as well as groups, and we had an Indian mascot that was on Van Born Forever, that was an eyesore, that I'm happy it's finally down, but things like that should not occur in twenty twenty-three, and I think if it was people's personal, personal ethnicity or race, I think it would be a little bit more action, and I hate to say that, but I feel like it's being stalled yet again, because in their opinion, when they read our resolution, they said it at our meeting, that they felt that it was a little bit watered down, so it was already watered down with the notion that it wouldn't get approved if it said the words that it really should say, and now it's still being stalled. So I just want to make sure that we understand that the resolution was brought forth, because we've had several community members come up and talk about the things in the community that are against the Indigenous people and Native Americans, and I think that we should get a move on it, I really hope I see it on the next agenda, thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Stop.
Hi, Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I'm not gonna steal everybody's thunder, I already talked about the police department, but I do feel, I, I do feel that, you know, we're very, very short-staffed on our police department, I, it's not just us residents that are affected, you gotta remember our officers, man, there, there's safety. You get a big event that goes on, and you don't have enough officers to cover things, it's just not us residents, it's our officers. And I have a question, too, about our drug enforcement unit, why, why would we ever get rid of our drug enforcement unit? Drugs right now, it's, it's an epidemic across this whole country, we're not immune to it here in Dearborn Heights. So I, I just don't understand, you know, and I'd like to know, if we don't think we have a problem here, I'd like to know how many overdoses we have here in Dearborn Heights. I really would like, would like an answer to that. And then I'm gonna give this to you, Lynn. I want to know if anybody here on city council has neighbors who park on their lawn, that they've lived, have, they have to live next door to that, go ahead, you can pass that down to them. For years, I've come up here complaining about ordinance issues and that, and I realize our ordinance department has been issuing, has been issuing the tickets and the violations, this, this car was ticketed February of twenty twenty-two.
Park?
There's a car that parks there all the time, and that actually looks nice now. Saturday, the car was towed out of there because there was so much mud, it was stuck and towed out, you see what the street and everything looks like.
Okay, if I could interrupt you for just a second, if you could just do me a favor, just make sure you don't mention addresses.
I'm not, I'm not, not at all, no, no, no.
Or the picture, let's just keep it, this doesn't-
Yes, no, it has no address or anything on it, it's, it's in the backyard, it's, anyways, they were issued a violation in, in February, it went to court in July, and instead of addressing the issue and fixing the problem, what they do is they give them a compliance fine. What the heck is a compliance fine? They didn't comply with anything. We have an ordinance that says you're not allowed to park on your lawn. So I looked up the word of definition of, of, of compliance, it says the state of being in accordance and established guidelines, or specification of the process of, or of becoming so. So what did they comply with? You know, and if the ordinance department is doing their job, and is getting to the courts and the prosecutor, and they're not taking care of it, then maybe it's time that the prosecutor and the judges come here and address the citizens as to why they're not enforcing our ordinances. They took an oath when they were sworn into office, and they're not upholding their oath. We deserve better. And I was, I was wondering on the golf course, I'm all in favor of the golf course, but, you know, they were told that we were gonna have regular updates on the golf course, we haven't had any updates from anybody on city council or from the mayor's office, and, you know, what's the money and everything being funded? And then I also have another thing about Ford Road, and all the traffic, all the garbage, all these strip malls, it's a disaster, head-on collisions, continue, I, I've seen them. Somebody needs to pick up Ford Road and Warren Avenue between Beachdale and Inkster, it's a mess. There's parking lots that have broken lights that are sitting in there, if you go in front of the UPS store, I'm not lying, there's probably two hundred empty bottles. What's going on? How come things aren't being taken care of? And if somebody can't do, you guys need to start ticketing people, I don't know, it's, it's looking bad here, really bad. There's construction barrels left on the roads, everything, it's horrible. Needs to be taken care of, man, looks like a dump.
Answer.
Thank you.
Watch your step, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, and Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say, I'm happy to announce that I've seen some progress over at Warren Valley Golf Course. There's some construction going on there, finally, starting to take shape. However, I did notice that the transformer has a brand-new cement pad. It was fine and level the other day, but it has sunk, so it's starting to lean again. So maybe they can take a look at that and get that straightened back out. I don't know who the construction people are, or whatever, but they should have had better foundation under there. Also, I'd like to bring up some of these lunch wagons that you have going on, the food service trucks and stuff like that. I know you gave them permission to park on parking lots for a couple of days here and there, but it's really starting to look like a storage lot with all these food trailers and everything. I didn't quite think that was what we were expecting, so maybe they should look at-
We have four.
Well, somebody needs to get out there and take a look at the license, because there's food trucks up and down Ford Road, Warren Avenue.
There's one on Dearborn side at Ford Road and Gully, but that's Dearborn, it's not else.
Okay, I'm talking about, okay. Well, they're out there, man, so go down Warren Avenue and take a look, okay? Also, I'd like to know if it's possible to have Mr. Issa come here and give us an approximate, or an update on anything that's gonna be taking place or transpiring when the project's supposed to be completed, or anything like that, as far as the golf course goes. And also, I wasn't gonna bring up our police department or anything like that, because I had other issues that I wanted to discuss here, or bring up. But there is a class starting January twenty-third at the Schoolcraft College with approximately thirty new cadets, so you can't tell me that there's nobody wanting to go into law enforcement. They may be going into a psychiatric program or whatever, but the people are there, Mr. Muscat. So maybe our chief can call Schoolcraft, since he has connections over there, or says he does. And it's very disappointing that we are losing officers, and it's a very disappointing start to know that we are still losing dispatchers. How do you run a department without anybody in it? And why are they leaving? I'd like the council to take a look at that, why are these people leaving? And also, your council members and your elected, what have you done for this city in the last year, or the last two years?
Are you asking us a question?
Yes, I'm asking a question, does it, you know? What have you done to improve this city in the last two to four years? And what is your plans? Do you have plans on approving the city?
I can have that conversation with you after this.
Go through the council, so, go ahead.
Well, quickly, Mr. Strachowski, we're the legislative branch of government, and we review the budget, we constituents call us, we talk to the department heads, we, especially through the council chair, advise the administration about, you know, different issues, except grants. We're part-time, we're the legislative branch, so, I mean, I, you know, I and Councilman Muscat, you know, we attend every meeting, we, but our role is to get ordinances enacted to review the budget, and, you know, not to, we don't, as, as-
This is stuff-
Piggy, and when he was on the council, he used to say, we're, we're not ombudsman, so we can't call and say, hey, my friend called on Main Street, and the neighbor, they're upset the neighbors driving on their lawn or their fences, we refer that to the administration, we follow the rules.
Okay. I'm sorry, Vince, but the time is up, I'll let Councilman Bedu answer you quickly.
I had another fifteen seconds, according to Mr. Muscat, I had another fifteen seconds.
Yeah, you got about ten seconds, okay.
Okay. So the other thing, now you, now you got me off track here, oh, what was the, the tree ordinance? I got nothing against anybody tearing down trees or anything like that, but when you remove approximately three acres of trees, and we're supposed to pay for a tree permit, is that money gonna go into the tree fund? Or is that, what's going on with that? Or is that, or are the-
You say three acres of trees, are you asking?
The, I'm referring to the property on Beach Daily, that the new mosque is going to be in.
The new mosque.
The, the new mosque, yes, sir, thank you. On Beach Daily, it's kind of, it's like right down the road from your house, sir.
Right, right.
Is that two acres, three acres, you know?
I think it's five of them.
Okay. So you wipe out five acres of trees, at what, maybe three, four hundred dollars a tree? We should be able to plant a lot of trees in this city. So has that money gone into the tree fund, or, is that just gonna be wiped off the board?
That's a good question. They went through the formal process, I know that much, but, I mean, nobody's gonna know the specifics right now.
That's a good thing, I want you to look into it.
Okay, let me know.
Yeah, we discussed that, you and I, I believed it the other day, and I'm sorry to tell you that I didn't follow up with it exactly then, but it was something that was on my mind, and then things progressed here, and it slipped my mind of discussing it, I apologize.
That, I don't expect an answer just like that, I know you're a very busy man.
I, I know there's, there's money in the tree fund, and I, I, we, we talked about, you and I talked about what I'd like to see done with it, and, but that's something that I'm just not gonna blurt out, something that I gotta talk to the administration about, and they can either tell me yea or nay, a good idea or not a good idea, and I can propose it to the city council to see what they say, so.
Well, considering there was a little, quite a bit of tree loss over at the golf course in the front there, maybe some of that could go to landscaping over there, making it look better.
Also, I just wanted to add a little thing, it was not four or five acres of trees that were taken down, there's already pre-existing building there, it's just a back lot.
I understand that, there was a back lot there, so if that-
It's not five acres of trees, just for full disclosure.
Whatever square footage was.
Right, right.
You know, there, there was obviously a lot of trees back there, and now there's nothing but a bunch-
I, I do know the proper permits and the proper process was gone through, I don't know the specifics, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to come up to speak? Come on up. Now, sir, I just wanna make sure you're aware, you have to say your name, your street, and your city, because you're new, I knew you were new at this, you're a little nervous.
By now, the whole city knows I live on Rosemary, Dearborn Heights.
Okay.
What's your name now?
Zuhair Abdulhaan. Anyway.
You don't look like the guy I know.
First, let me brag a little bit about my daughter, since the kids from Crestwood are here. She got early acceptance to Harvard School.
Wow.
And I hope that, since you are juniors and seniors, I hope you get the same quality of education, and I hope to see you in Ivy League colleges, because you are the future.
Yes, right.
Wow. Anyway, I don't know how many of you read the audit report, and how far you went in the audit report. The auditor's asking you to change the, some of the control policies, which are in the controller's office and the treasurer's office, because there are accounts which are paying different accounts, and there are money in the hundreds, maybe in the millions, not being asked for and collected from agencies maybe outside of the city. So that basically need to be taken care of. And I remember when I was on the council, I did put forward more than a motion, a resolution, and you voted to accept it, and you voted on it to amend the charter. It has been more than a year and three months, and I haven't seen anybody move to bring it back to the table to amend the charter, basically to take care of these items, which it took an auditor from outside to tell us we should do this. It should have been the city council duty to bring a resolution back which was voted on, and it was in detail how to establish it, by how many members, and until today, you did not do that. I appreciate it, if the council chair will bring it back to the table and establish the committee and take care of those deficiencies which are inside the audit report, because I remember we hired a controller, which I believe he sat for a year in the city, and since he didn't do his job, it cost the residents six hundred and ten thousand dollars. We had to bring other entities, plant Moran and different entities to fix the problems which he didn't fix. It's on you, the city council, more than the administration, even he was an epitaph appointment, it's on you, it's not him.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else that has a public comment, please? Come on up, sir.
My name is Ned Apigian, I live on Rosetta Street in the Military Hill subdivision. I don't usually come and make comments that affect me personally, but I like to begin by two simple observations. Based on the comment I heard, the fee for the tree inspection, it used to be sixty dollars, it's only to compensate the city for Frank to go out and look and see if your tree is dead or needs to be removed, and then after the removal, somebody's gotta go from the city to see that the work was done. The fee has nothing, should have nothing to do with putting money in the tree fund, it's insignificant. The sixty dollars doesn't even cost, cover the cost of the city to go over there and look at your tree to decide whether it should stay or go. However, since we're talking about trees, in my subdivision on Bonner, and I know the city doesn't have the time or money, there's a guy that bought a house, there's seven city trees, Zuhair, you'll remember, you saw those, I had a presentation once, they're right on the curb. He decided to trim city trees, I don't believe the city did it. If you go under a viaduct anywhere in Metro Detroit, all you see is fifteen, sixteen feet clearance to trim trees so vehicles or trucks can go underneath, not fifty or sixty feet. clearance to trim trees so vehicles or trucks can go underneath, not 50 or 60 feet. This guy trimmed seven city trees, took the beauty off our street. But my reason I came today is I mistakenly didn't take my trash out on my trash day, which is Thursday. The reason is there was a holiday. Apparently, the city didn't honor the holiday, so I thought I was missed. Following week, another holiday, I don't take my trash out on Thursday, but on that day, I see the truck coming on Thursday, and I run outside in my pajamas, at least with one bag, and I learn that the city, uh, day is going. It takes me from last Thursday, I know the rule, you don't have to call Public Works. I have priorities numbered in my phone. I called Thursday, I got missed. Would you come? I expected somebody to come Friday. Nobody came. I called Friday, expect somebody to come Saturday. Nobody came Friday. Nobody came Saturday. I wait till Monday, nobody comes Monday. I call again, I actually speak to human beings. I called today, and today they got it. That is unacceptable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Apigian, next time your trash is missed, please give me a call.
What?
Right here, Mr. Apigian.
Right.
Oh.
Next time you get that problem, call me, please, that your trash.
I, 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 I think I, I wouldn't call the city or any, I certainly wouldn't call the councilman and say, go get the garbage.
Well, just give me a call if you have that problem, please.
Two weeks and five days is ridiculous, especially since I'm talking to people. I'm not leaving a mess.
I agree. Okay. Anybody else in the audience? See none? Anybody else on Zoom? I don't see any, but Madam Clerk, do you see any?
Do not see any. Hands up. Council chair, I missed an announcement.
I'm sorry?
I missed an announcement. Could I do that, please? All right. I'd like to introduce, uh, Tanya Sterlini. She's in the back row. She is the new president of the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, our next meeting, and Valentine Pepper, is the VP. Our next meeting is January 26, 7:00 PM at 3335 South Beach Daily. Also, uh, we have a new chair for the Ecorus Creek Commission, Kurt Whitmore, and that meeting is at the same location, 33, South Beach Daily, 335, uh, South Beach Daily, and Wednesday, January 25th at 6:00 PM. We'd like to invite everybody to come to any of our meetings. We do expect to have some decent speakers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, council chair, just to piggyback on that, congratulations. I believe she's also the newly trustee of the D7 School District. So congratulations to you as well. Remember you do this job, and, and I commend you guys for that. Congratulations.
Just before we move to adjourn, one last statement to the Crestwood, uh, young men here for their project, uh, students. I'm sorry, no, no, who are they? Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. It can't be you. I just wanna let you guys know, getting, coming to your own government that represents you and making your voices heard will make a difference. The gentleman's gone now, but Mr. MJ originally came to the city council, started, you know, he had some concerns about people being able to cross on Beach Daily. Short version of the story, through a lot of conversations and at council meetings, he was able to make the change and now there's gonna be a crossing walk for Crestwood High School. So I just wanna let you guys know what you guys are doing. I know you're new at it, but you will make a difference one day. Maybe one day you'll be sitting in here. So, thank you for coming by.
Council chair.
Anything else? Go ahead, council.
I move, uh, to adjourn.
Support. Moved to adjourn by Councilman Muscat, support by Councilman Beadu, and a discussion. Hear none? All favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Good night, ladies and gentlemen.